Good morning Nigel, good morning everybody and welcome to November's executive meeting. It's six months since this council has been formed and I'd just like to congratulate councillors from whichever party you belong to on doing sterling work. I know that everybody that is in the council works to the very best that they can for the betterment of Lincolnshire and long may it continue. Apologies for absence.
Thank you leader, we have not received any apologies today.
Thank you, there seems to be a few people missing. A declaration of councillors' interests then, has any councillor from the executive got any extra or unusual interests that they would like to raise today? Take that as a note. Announcements by the leader, executive councillors and executive directors, I don't have anything, does any executive councillor have anything to say? Or any directors? Trying to catch me out. Item three is it? Four. I've got thirty-two, so thirty-three, so that's slightly confusing. Is the minutes from the meeting of the executive held on the 2nd of September? Has anybody got any notes or comments about the minutes of the meeting on the 2nd of September? These are as a correct record as opposed to anything else. Do we have to approve them? If everybody's happy then, can we get a vote for approval, all those in a favour? That is unanimous. So I'll do what I normally forget to do, which is sign them. I'll get chased down for about two hours after the normal meetings trying to get me to sign them. Right then, item five is the Lynx Coast... Do you want to read it? Oh, I did think I hadn't seen that. Ah, jolly good. I'll sign those in a minute. Too much paper. So, item five then is the active recovery beds recommissioning. Martin, where are you? Martin, there you are, good morning.
Thank you leader, so just to introduce this item briefly, so this is a report about active recovery beds, so many people leave hospital who have finished their hospital treatment, the NHS has done as much as they can for them in hospital, they've recovered from their crisis but they're not yet well enough to go home and they have ability to recover more independence and more skills than they have at the point where they are discharged from hospital. So the active recovery beds, as their name suggests, play a vital role in enabling people, perhaps in previous times we might have talked about condolence, of people to recover from the crisis that led them to be in hospital so that they are able to have the maximum level of independence, the maximum ability to look after themselves when they return home. And the active recovery beds provide an active environment, a very specialist environment, which supports individuals through occupational therapy and other therapy treatments to have as rapid and as full a recovery as they possibly can so that when they do return home after a maximum of a few weeks that they have achieved the highest level of recovery that they can and are therefore able to look after themselves to the greatest way, extent that they can. And that means that individuals have the best quality of life that is possible, they also therefore have the lowest level of demand, ongoing demand for care that is necessary and as a consequence there is a significant benefit to the council in terms of reduced demand for ongoing social care and the costs that we and indeed the NHS pay for that. So it's a really vital part of the system that has proven itself and we are at this stage now looking to have a further year of that service. So I'll hand over to Martin Parker, my assistant director, to set out a little bit more detail of that and then we'll, Carmella will talk a little bit about the contractual terms.
Thanks Martin, thanks leader. So thanks for the introduction Martin, just in terms of some extra information, so this is a kind of a re-ablement service that's commissioned by Lincolnshire County Council but also includes in partnership with the Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. The beds are located in care homes throughout Lincolnshire and as Martin says, they are there to support those who are medically fit for discharge but not yet ready to go home. The service provides that 28-day intensive care for individuals which includes occupational therapy and care-led re-ablement to help those people regain that independence. There is also a community offering for active recovery beds, so it's not just about those that are coming out of hospital, it's actually there also to prevent people going into hospital where there is a need and making sure there's no unnecessary hospital admissions. And these referrals come from our own adult social care teams, the urgent community response services and also the East Midlands ambulance service, so it's not just a hospital discharge element. Why are active recovery beds important? Well, they reduce those hospital stays and facilitate timely discharges, they prevent admissions by offering alternatives to hospital care and they also promote that independence, helping individuals regain mobility, confidence and daily life skills. Reducing those long-term care needs will in turn lower the demand on home care services. So what are the benefits in terms of the headline? So 64% of individuals using active recovery beds return home either with reduced care or no care at all. A recent review showed the cost of avoidance is nearly a million pounds over just a three-year period in reduced home care needs. For every one pound spent, the council avoids four pounds seventy in future home care costs. The service supports that sustainability of local care market by commissioning beds for Lincolnshire providers and also strengthens our partnership working with NHS and aligns with the national health objectives. So that's just a kind of an overview in terms of what they are, why they're important and the benefits and I'll just hand over to Carl just to take you through the contractual elements.
Thank you. So current contracts have been in place since July 23 and expire on the 31st of March next year with no extension options available, so the recommendations will enable continuity of support with effect from the 1st of April next year. Bed numbers have been reduced through the term of the current contract to align with demand and that flexibility to increase or decrease bed numbers is written into the contracts to ensure the number of beds matches the presenting need. Beds are purchased through a block payment mechanism to ensure the availability of capacity and providers must ensure that their provision is always fully staffed and able to accept referrals at short notice. Now, because of the block purchasing model, payments are made whether the beds are occupied or not, so it is really important to ensure the bed numbers we're purchasing through the next contract cycle are right-sized. Demand and utilisation modelling work has been undertaken and in order to reduce the difference between the usage cost and the contract expenditure, the number of beds for the next contract is proposed to be reduced from 29 to 24. So that will take the average occupancy from currently around 70% to over 90% and that will improve the already significant return on investment offered by the service. But flexibility will still remain to adjust bed numbers to meet presenting demand during the term of the next contract. So active recovery beds are only one component of the current intermediate care services landscape across health and care in Lincolnshire. A new integrated care system, intermediate care strategy is in development with the vision being to develop a seamless intermediate care service that meets people's needs in a timely manner, simple to navigate and supports people to maximise their independence in their own homes thus reducing the need for longer-term care provision. Because the vision for future delivery is still in development, a short duration of one year is proposed for the initial term of the new active recovery beds contracts. The other significant driver for that duration is budget availability which is currently only confirmed for one year from both the Integrated Care Board and from the council's perspective. But it is proposed that there will be opportunities to extend the contracts by up to a maximum of a further two years if required to enable the next iteration of the service to be a stepping stone towards the implementation of a future integrated intermediate care service, subject of course to the availability of future funding. Bed rates for the next contract cycle will continue to be set by the council at a level consistent with other bed-based intermediate care provision. Joint funding between the council and the Integrated Care Board will continue with a 50-50 split of the contract costs and for the initial contract year it's proposed that the council's funding element will continue to be paid from non-recurrent grant reserves subject of course to the approval of the recommendations of the report. Thank you.
Thank you everybody and thank you for the report. Councillor Cullen is now going to give us a feedback about the scrutiny committee of the adult care and public health.
Thank you leader, I would like to draw the executive's attention to the scrutiny statement which is found on pages 30 through to 31 of the executive's agenda pack. The committee recorded its strong support for renewing the active recovery beds initiative which is part of the overall process of helping people to get back to living at home as independently as possible. The report quotes the projected savings from the service for each pound spent, however, living independently is not just about reducing the pressures and costs on adult social care and the NHS, it also helps people to feel better about themselves as they make more choices about their own lives and daily routines. This theme is picked up in the executive's next item on the adult social care strategy. As stated in the report, the committee received points of clarification on four topics, I would like to highlight one of these, the link between active recovery beds and hospital discharge. As only a specific type of patient benefits from this service, it is important that the right number of beds are commissioned. If there are too many beds, there is a low rate of occupancy. As stated in the main report, the new contract will be planning for a higher bed occupancy rate than the current 70%. The aim for 90% bed occupancy will make better use of the resources allocated. Finally, this service is not the only activity that supports discharge from hospital as there are several others which are not covered in this report. They are detailed within the winter planning paper, include home-based re-ablement service, hospital discharge home recovery scheme, the community corridor scheme among others. Thank you.
Thank you Maggie, can you pass on my thanks to the scrutiny committee for the efforts and work that they do?
Of course, thank you leader.
I now invite any questions or observations from the executive councils. Councillor Oliver.
Yes, thank you for the paper, it's a highly commended service and it clearly has great implications in terms of a council, not only for outcomes of our residents but also in terms of cost avoidance, so I commend that. A few questions from me, page 18, 3.8. It states that referrals can only be accepted if the individual is usually resident in Lincolnshire and is registered with a Lincolnshire GP. There are other mentions about the criteria within the report, so I just wondered if you could clarify what is meant by usually, if possible, thank you.
So I can pick that up, so in adult social care legislation there is a term about ordinary residents and essentially every individual is the responsibility of the local authority in which they are ordinarily resident. Effectively we've used a synonym there but essentially someone has to be the responsibility of the county council, so they have to be ordinarily resident in the legal technicality of that term to be eligible for the ARBs. So they have to be, from a local authority perspective, ordinarily resident, therefore our responsibility and they have to be registered with a Lincolnshire GP and therefore the ICB's responsibility. So if they're not one of those, then they are not our responsibility, they are another organisation's responsibility and therefore that other authority would need to find the appropriate route for them.
Right, so there wouldn't be any non- Lincolnshire residents, unless they were registered with a Lincolnshire GP? Right, okay, so how many non-residents are registered with a Lincolnshire GP, do we know?
So NHS registration is based on registered with a Lincolnshire GP, so the NHS will consider you as registered on the basis of where your GP is rather than where you live and there are, so from memory I think there are something like 780,000 people who live in Lincolnshire and are considered therefore by the council to be ordinary resident. I think there are something like 810,000 people who are registered with a Lincolnshire GP. It is worth noting that because people for a variety of reasons can be appropriately registered with more than one GP, the national number of people registered with GPs is greater than the national population but essentially there are somewhat more people registered with Lincolnshire GPs and therefore the responsibility of the ICB than are ordinarily resident within the county and therefore the responsibility of the county council.
Thank you. My other question if I may, or do you want to go elsewhere?
So I was just going to clarify on that point, further on in the report there are references without the word usually. I think there needs to be a bit of consistency, either we just talk about residents who are registered with GPs or we talk about usually residents. So either we, my preference would be to take out the usually, I think it's ambiguous and it might cause us a bit of pains and troubles if people picked up on it particularly. So the easiest thing and I think the report goes on to do this in detail is to not have that usually in there.
So I think the key issue is that access to the ARBs, a member of the public can't refer themselves, they have to be registered, they have to be referred by a clinician and we have to have eligibility criteria that the clinicians follow and essentially what those eligibility criteria are clear, that someone has to be ordinarily resident in the county and they have to be registered with a Lincolnshire GP. So it is very, it is back and white for the clinical staff who are making those references and that's built into the contract.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you chairman. Is it possible for somebody who is registered with a GP in Lincolnshire but pays council tax in another authority to receive paid-for care from the Lincolnshire council taxpayer? And if it is, do we have methods or processes in place to be able to cross-charge that other local authority that is in receipt of the council tax?
We do have cross-charging arrangements with other ICBs in those sorts of circumstances. I'm not certain what number of residents or GP-registered individuals that might apply to in the case of active recovery beds, but we can double-check that information and confirm for you.
Councillor Kelly. Sorry, Councillor Oliver.
Thank you chair. My next question relates to page, well it's page 19 but also goes on to page 20, it's the table at 3.17. It's the percentages in terms of outcomes for individuals. I note that 34%, I note that the objection is to get people home as described in your announcement in terms of introducing the policy. 34% don't go home with care or home re-ablement, they either end up in residential or back in hospital. I wonder if we could have some more detail as to why we've still got 34% doing that, please.
So I think that there are essentially two ways that we could be working with the eligibility, that we could be saying we'll only take people that we're absolutely certain that we can make a massive impact on and therefore have the service focused only effectively on the relatively easy cases. Or we can say, which is the line that we've been taking, that there are people where we think that there is the potential for re-ablement. You can't be absolutely definite about someone's potential for re-ablement at the start of re-ablement, you can say, well we think, we think based on clinical judgment that this individual is likely to respond to re-ablement and that the service is the appropriate service for them, but that is inevitably a clinical judgement and in some instances we will find that actually the individual has a relapse and requires, means that they have to go back to hospital or that even though we were able to re-able them, they still need residential care. So essentially it's a question based on a clinical judgement of what we think that, are we going to get, by setting the criteria at the appropriate level that we're going to have the best impact on individuals? And the experience so far has been that it's better to have the criteria slightly wider so that we sometimes get a proportion of people who may not then return home but may still benefit from the service rather than have a narrower criteria because the level of saving that we're achieving, the four pounds seventy for every pound spent means that it's better for us to take a slight risk with some individuals because overall that will work out as a net saving to the council and it will be a benefit to the individual.
So in terms of the 22% going back into hospital, are they going back in with the same condition or?
We'd have to look at the data in detail, I would suspect that many of them are but some won't be, on the whole these will be often quite complex individuals, so quite a few of them will be going back with the same condition and that will be where they've had a decline in their health that wasn't forecast by the clinicians.
Okay, and sorry, just one more follow-up on that. And then in terms of going into ARB and the 12% that end up going into residential, is what does the cost impact look like, the fact that you're trying them with the ARB rather than them going into residential or is it a better outcome for that patient to go straight into residential instead of us having the two different settings if you like?
So residential care is slightly cheaper than the ARBs and the ARBs are not a means-tested service, so from the individual's perspective they are re-abled to the maximum that they can be, that could well mean that although they're still going into residential care they may not be going into much more expensive residential care. So an individual might go into residential care, had they gone straight from hospital, they might have gone into residential care plus a one-to-one whereas they might be through re-ablement, going through the active recovery bed, going into residential care without a one-to-one. So we quite often will still be able to reduce the cost of the ongoing package for the individual and that is, clearly it's better for the individual that they have an improved quality of life, that they are as re-abled as they can be and any care that we are meaning that they don't need in the long term is a financial saving. So on balance, even for people who are going into residential care, we're confident that there is a net saving both to, there is a net saving to the council and then there will often be a net saving to the individual as well if they're contributing to the cost of their care.
Thank you.
Councillor Kelly.
Thank you chairman. Just in regards to the clinical decision-making process, is that completely owned by the NHS or do we have a clinician as part of the local authority that is suitably qualified and experienced to form part of that decision-making process so it's not a one-sided decision-making process?
It is a multidisciplinary team as part of the hospital discharge hub that will work to review these cases. Referrals can be recommended by social work practitioners and/or clinicians from the NHS, but those decisions will be made as part of a team looking at those patients' requirements and potential for re-ablement collectively.
I understand the multi-agency approach but if, nobody is going to, nobody is going to push back on what a clinician says because of the qualifications they have and if we don't have clinical competence at that decision-making process then our risk appetite to push back on that is going to be a lot lower and this could be, you know, some people could see the 22% that is returning to hospital as people that shouldn't have been released from hospital in the first place, so that then brings into question that clinical sign-off process.
So if I pick that up, I think I would draw a distinction between clinical input and professional input. So clearly the local authority is not able to employ doctors and would not employ nurses, that is an NHS function and therefore the decision about, from a clinical perspective, is inevitably an NHS clinical view, so doctors' nurses' view. However, we have social workers who are highly professional and are part of the multidisciplinary team and I would assure you that we absolutely do push back for the NHS. So the NHS will make the decision about whether someone is fit for discharge, that is absolutely an NHS and solely NHS decision, has the hospital done as much as it can do and the NHS will then discharge the individual. There is then the question of, is the individual being discharged appropriate to go into the active recovery bed and that is a joint decision clinically and professionally from a social work perspective. And if we from a professional social work perspective don't believe that the individual is appropriate for the active recovery bed, they won't go into an active recovery bed.
Yep, understood, but to me, the figures, the 22% speaks for itself and if we are still having 22% return to hospital then it brings into question to me the clinical sign-off process that allowed those people to be released from hospital in the first place and it could be a scenario where the hospital is short of beds and they're looking for easy options in order to release people, to free up beds etcetera for other people that are more needing, but that, you know, then impacts on the council taxpayer because we're obviously paying 50% of those costs.
So I would give you a reassurance that we would never take someone into the active recovery bed simply because the NHS was desperate to discharge them from hospital, it is a, they are two entirely separate decisions, discharge from hospital, admission into an active recovery bed. So the NHS can make the decision about discharging from hospital, they do also have targets about the number of readmissions within 91 days and they are monitored, performance managed by the NHS National on that, but that is an entirely separate decision from whether someone is admitted into an active recovery bed. And we have deliberately had the criteria reasonably wide so that we can, on the balance, the experience has been that even if a proportion of people are going back into hospital, that means we're catching people where we can make a difference to them and we can successfully re-able them.
Sorry, my final follow-up. Still 22% is high, is there a improvement, is there a continual improvement plan in order to reduce that 22%?
We are always looking at, can we make sure that we are using, we are using the beds in the most effective way. You'll see from the report that when this scheme was first started there were 70 active recovery beds and we have progressively focused down the number so that we are absolutely trying, doing our level best so that only the people who can benefit from the type of care, and it's very specialist care, from the type of care that the active recovery beds deliver, only those people go into those beds. These aren't a dumping ground for people just for the NHS to get people out, they are a specialised focused service which is generally seen to make a significant difference on people's quality of life and through that to save money both for individuals paying for their own care and for the council taxpayer.
Sorry, that's two strands, you know, the number of beds is different to the 22% returning to hospital, so the question was, is there a continual improvement plan in process in order to reduce that 22% to as low as reasonably practicable?
Yes.
Thank you, I understand the councillors' concerns, it's an active recovery Thank you. I understand the councillor's concerns. It's an active recovery beds system. And so the two things, it's actively helping people to recover. And perhaps that decision where you decide to put people into that ARB needs to be a bit more stringent, because I think a third, slightly over a third of the people going back into hospital suggests, or into care, suggests that there might be a bit of wrong people going into there. But that's something that we'll keep an eye on and look forward to a reduction in those numbers. So councillor Oliver.
Just to add to that, I also think it'd be helpful to have the detail as to why they went back into hospital, whether it was the same condition or if it was something else. I think that would probably be also helpful for us to have a better understanding.
We can do a review.
Thank you. I have got another question, if that's all right?
I thought you might.
The report mentions that we currently have an occupational therapist that is agency. And there is talk about recruiting an occupational therapist on a temporary contract. Considering the cost avoidance for both the local authority and the NHS, it's unlikely that this is a service that the funding won't become available for. I think that's probably fair to say. So in terms of taking an occupational therapist in-house, in terms of a temporary contract, I just wondered if you could give us more information in terms of the financial comparison and the benefits comparison on that?
So if I start off on the broader position and then I'll ask Carl to pick up on the specific about the agency member staff. So I think you are right that we are working on the expectation that this will continue to be something where the NHS will contribute and that we'll work jointly in this area. Reference was made earlier to the intermediate care strategy. One of the things that we are looking to do in that strategy is to reduce to the absolute barest minimum bed-based care. So we are seeking, and evidence of our success already in the fact that we started with seventy active recovery beds and this contract will take us down to twenty-four, is we are seeking, actually, both from a social care perspective and an NHS perspective, to maximise our ability to re-able people at home rather than being in a specialist unit. So part of the reason why we, that this contract is initially set as a one-year contract with the option to extend, is that we are aiming that in fact, this contract won't be required in a year's time because we will have moved entirely to home-based re-ablement. And so therefore, while I'm very much expecting that the NHS will continue to work with us and we will continue to joint fund re-ablement activity, our, I just want to be really clear that it is entirely possible that this service might come to an end in eighteen months' time or so, because it is no longer required because we have been more successful in the home-based re-ablement. So just to clarify that particular point. But I would expect that still to be a jointly-funded service. So that's hopefully given Carl a little bit of time to think about the specific answer on the OT agency member.
Yeah, I know that colleagues have looked at the precise cost differentiation between recruiting somebody directly on a temporary contract and the cost of an agency occupational therapist. And that is something that will be progressed for the initial, to match the initial term of the contract, subject to our ability to recruit that individual.
Councillor Kelly.
Sorry, chairman, just to add on that, I would imagine a suitably qualified occupational therapist would actually form quite a good member of a, you know, a clinical decision-making process. So that could reinforce the council's position, actually, you know, into ensuring that the right people are being released accordingly. Just food for thought, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone got any more questions? Now, in that case, I will go on to invite the executive to vote on... Councillor Oliver.
Thank you. Page thirty-seven references translation services. I wondered what those translation services look like. It's under positive impacts on page thirty-seven.
So occasionally, we will find that a person who is a Lincolnshire resident and registered with the Lincolnshire GP may not have English as their first language and we need to, we are required to ensure that they are able to access the service regardless of whether they're, of their language. So as with all of our services, and I can't find the specific reference that you're making on the page in the... Yes, so we make sure that if anyone doesn't have English as their first language, they are able to access translation, because the re-ablement service is unlikely to be effective if they are unable to communicate with the staff. So we just need to make sure that there is a, they are able to do that. I think, I suspect that the number of individuals for whom this applies will be vanishingly small, because this is primarily a service for people over the age of sixty-five. And, you know, as a proportion of the population, people who don't have English as their first language is very small. So it'll be the occasional case.
So I think when I said, what does that look like? So does that mean that you would bring in a translator? Or is it something that you would do by AI? Or how, and also, I think it would probably be quite useful for the executive to know how many people were accessing and what the cost is of that service?
So it would be through our usual translation services. So I'm not familiar with the detail. We can come back to you. And we can come back with details of the cost of that service.
Thank you.
There is also Google Translate works very well. There are other types of Google translation services available, I'm sure. Okay, I'll try again then. I now invite the executive to vote on the recommendations set out in page twelve of the agenda pack. All those in favour? That is unanimous. Okay. Item six then is the Adult Social Care Strategy 2025 to 2028. And I believe that is Martin again.
I'm afraid it is, yes. So adult social care is the largest single spending area of the county council. What we do is heavily regulated by the Care Act 2014. I think it's fair to say that Lincolnshire has had, although we are a very low-spending authority in terms of adult social care, in fact, in the latest data that we have available, which is 2023 to 2024, Lincolnshire was in fact the lowest spender in the country per head of population on adult social care for individuals over the age of sixty-five. So we have an effective, perhaps rather traditional, service. Part of trying to modernise the service and to make sure that it really is focused on the things that it needs to be focused on and delivering the outcomes that it needs to focus on, has been the development of a new strategy. I think it's been a number of years since adult social care has had a clear strategy, which sets out the vision for adult social care and the key approaches that are intended to be taken in achieving that. And so what we've been trying to do through this strategy is to put, have a clear sense of people being at the heart of adult social care. This is fundamentally about people being able to live the best possible quality of life and that the focus is on maximising independence, thereby reducing the need and demand for adult social care and therefore enabling us to maintain control over the budget. Supporting that strategy, we've been developing a target operating model, which is very much designed to guide staff when they are working with people and seeking to support them. And it is, the target operating model set out in the draft strategy is very much focused on connecting with people at an early stage in their, in their, the development of needs, in order for people to be informed and able to access opportunities and support for which they themselves can take responsibility and for which they and their families can take forward without the need to lean upon the council. So the whole thrust of the target operating model is at every single stage in someone's journey to focus on a strength-based approach about, well, what is it that someone can do or can lean on in their, in their community and their family? And what can they do for themselves to maintain the maximum level of independence and therefore to slow and if possible, avoid the need for formal care? And it is worth noting, councillor Clegg and myself, were, just yesterday, we visited one of our community opportunities centres and the staff there were talking about the target operating model and how it was influencing the way in which they are doing their work and had guided them in a new and different way to think about prevention and, as I say, a strength-based approach. So the strategy is designed to bring these issues together, to provide that sense of direction and purpose and clarity and to provide the underpinning for the way in which the service is delivered. It's a key part of our process in terms of the Care Quality Commission. We are, as members of the executive will be aware, we are about to be, well, we're in the process of being inspected by the Care Quality Commission. And having a strategy document which sets out what we're here for is a key part of that. I should however note that the document that you have in front of you, as we've been going through further checking and engagement with it, we've identified that there are some areas where it's not quite right. We haven't quite reached, got to the wording and the clarity that we were seeking for. And therefore, I would draw the executive's attention to recommendation two about delegating to me in consultation with the executive councillor to make amendments for the strategy as may be necessary prior to publication, because we know it's not quite there yet.
Thank you, Martin. I now refer to councillor Cullen again from the scrutiny committee.
Thank you, leader. I would like to draw the executive's attention to the scrutiny statement, which begins on page fifty and ends on page fifty-three of the executive's agenda pack. As stated on page fifty, the Adults Care and Public Health Scrutiny Committee considered this draft strategy on twenty-third of July 2025. At that time, the strategy was due for consideration by the executive on the second of September. The committee's discussions in July led to various sections of the draft strategy being reviewed and executives' consideration being deferred until today. The committee's suggestions are helpfully detailed on pages one hundred and fifty-seven through two hundred and sixty-two of the agenda pack, together with responses to these suggestions. As a result of the review, there have been some elements in the draft strategy where the wording has been strengthened, which are welcome. Furthermore, section five of the strategy, on pages sixty-four to sixty-five, is a completely new section. It provides a definition for adult social care, which is then amplified through the council's duties under the Care Act. I agree with the executive director that the inclusion of this section will help the public understand what adult social care is and how it provides its services with a focus on each person rather than on processes. As a final point, I would like to highlight that the committee's support for the principles in the strategy was unanimous. Depending on the executive's decision on the strategy today, the committee will be looking to see how the strategy is implemented in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cullen. And again, pass on my thanks to the scrutiny committee for their hard work.
Of course, thank you.
I now open it up to debate. Any councillor have any questions or comments? Councillor Clegg.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you to Martin for your presentation and thank you councillor Cullen for your comments from the scrutiny committee. As has been already touched on, there are areas that aren't quite right. But in general, the strategy that we have before us does mark a step change for this county council. We were, I think it's fair to say, a solid but traditional service. And this strategy document would transform us into a truly modern and prevention-first system. It would place us, our residents' emphasis on a strength-based approach at its heart, where we focus on what people can do rather than what people can't, using their own networks, assets and goals to keep them independent and so on. What we all want is a responsive, inclusive future for our residents and to put people at the centre of their care. I'd like to thank the scrutiny committee for their comments, which have been incorporated into the document that we have before us and for the tenacity of the officers and for them listening and incorporating those comments. They have done so with creativity and enthusiasm. However, since this document was reviewed by the scrutiny committee back in July and it was due to come before executive in September, there have been quite a few changes. We now have a new chief executive and chair at the ICB. And unless I'm mistaken, and I put this question to you, Martin, I don't think they've actually been engaged in reviewing this document. And I wonder whether they should. Thank you.
So just to answer your question, councillor Clegg, so we did engage with the leadership of the Lincolnshire ICB, but as exactly as you say, through the cluster arrangements in the NHS, there's now been a significant change in senior leadership in the, at the head of the NHS in our new cluster area. And the new leadership of the ICB cluster has not been engaged in this process.
Thank you for clarifying that. Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, chair. Thank you for the report. I do commend the overwhelming objective in terms of empowering our residents in order to promote independent living and also to improve outcomes for our most vulnerable. I think that, you know, that is definitely something that we need to note with this strategy in terms of moving us forward as a council. What my observation is, is that the report is incredibly long, I would say slightly long-winded. In terms of what we are trying to achieve with this strategy, I feel that there are grounds to make it a lot more concise in order to make it more readable for the wider public, so that those who will benefit most from this strategy will actually be able to, you know, take this on board in terms of assisting them the most. So unfortunately, that doesn't line with recommendation two in my mind, because that isn't simple typographical or minor amendments to the current strategy.
Thank you. Any other questions from the executive? Okay, well, there's a couple of points there that we need to address, I think. In terms of engaging with the new chief executive and chairman, I think it's important that we engage with them and get to talk to one another about this policy. So I think the best thing would be to reject recommendation one at this stage and get it reviewed. And I think reject recommendation number two, and then we can bring it back through scrutiny, OSMB, and then executive again with its new, fully-engaged hat on. And at that stage, perhaps we'll be able to reduce its length somewhat for the benefit of councillor Oliver and us all. Would that be a way of going forward, councillor Clegg?
Yes, chairman, I agree with you and I'd be happy to second that.
So yes, that'll be my recommendation and it's seconded by councillor Clegg. Anybody got any contrary views on that point?
So are we now voting on the new recommendation? Just for clarification, please, chair.
So we will be voting on, so we're voting on the new recommendation, which is to review it and send it back and put it back through OSMB. So I invite the executive to vote on that new recommendation. All those in favour? That is unanimous again. Thank you. Great, right then. Item number seven, Better Belonging Lincolnshire Scrutiny Strategy for Send, Sufficiencies Strategy for Send and Alternative Provisions 2025 to 2028. Heather Sandy. Heather Sandy will now report. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. So we've got the team here today and they're going to present the Better Belonging Strategy, which has been through OSMB and is here for approval.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you. Good morning to the executive. So we present to you today the SEND Better Belonging Sufficiency Strategy, which outlines our plans or proposed plans for twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight to address and support an inclusive agenda across Lincolnshire for those young people who may or may not have special educational needs or disabilities. The strategy outlines the use of the high needs capital funding that's allocated by the DFE for this purpose and the strategy introduces a three tiered models of support. One within mainstream with enhancements around mainstream hubs, providing that next level of specialist support within mainstream buildings but run with their own offer, curriculum and support. And then additionality around post sixteen provisions to enable to increase capacity within special schools but also give post sixteen students who require that additional support that experience of an enhancement around preparation for adulthood. And we're also going to continue to look at best use of our special school estate. The context for this, as the executive I'm sure will be aware, is that the high need system since twenty-fourteen has ever increasing demands on it, whether that's volume, demand for placements and accessibility to types of placement, as well as the financial constraints and burdens associated with it. This strategy proposes to look at alternative models to reduce the demand and spend from the high needs block but also to make sure that young people are educated as close to home as possible but also able to experience a blend of mainstream provision and specialist education. We will be looking to reduce the number of independent non-maintained placements, which are currently the most expensive level of provision within the system and also the ones that are hardest to access at close to home. In terms of our governance arrangements around this, we will be seeking for the permission to be able to allocate authorisation to the executive director and councillor for us to commence individual projects once the strategy has been signed off. So happy to take any questions.
On that point, has anybody got any questions for Martin? Right, okay, so Elaine, Katie, Kate, you're all included in that. Right, that one summed up. Okay, fantastic. Stand by. So I now invite councillor Roberts, chairman of the overview and scrutiny management board, to brief us on the recent OSMB.
Thank you, Chair. Dear Chairman and members, the overview and scrutiny management board considered this report at our meeting held on the thirtieth of October, twenty-twenty-five. After a detailed officer presentation and a thorough debate, the board unanimously resolved to endorse the report and support its recommendations to you. We welcome the ambition to strengthen the inclusive practice across schools and to expand local provision for children and young people with special educational needs and disabilities. S E N D. We recognise the strategy's tiered approach, workforce development, strengthened mainstream support, SEND hubs, specialist provision and early intervention and commend its evidence base and clear alignment with Lincolnshire's priorities. I will take a brief moment to recap the key takeaways from our debate. On the suggested strategic approach, the board noted that the Better Belonging model, which had been locally developed by councillor Oliver and her team to meet the Lincolnshire's needs and reflected national expectations for sufficiency planning. Members supported this shift from large scale special school expansion towards community based inclusion through hubs. Officers confirmed strong sector engagement and emphasised that the model was designed to reduce resilient, sorry, reliance on education, health and care plans, EHCPs, by improving early identification and support with mainstream settings. In relation to demand, forecasting and capacity, we acknowledged the growing national and local pressures created by the significant rise in EHCPs and tribunal cases. Members commended Lincolnshire for maintaining financial stability without statutory override but emphasised the importance of accurate forecasting and responsive capacity planning. We were assured that forecasting models had been independently validated and were updated to reflect increased assessment requests, rising from one hundred and forty-eight to two hundred and ten per month. The board also noted the value of postcode level demand modelling, the importance of accounting for population growth and housing developments and the challenge of inward migration of children with SEND. We heard that forecasts incorporated housing and birth rate data and that the surplus primary capacity could enable further hub development. Members welcomed the assurances that the SEND and Alternative Provision Partnership Board provided ongoing oversight that the improvements in early support such as enhanced speech and language pathways were designed to meet needs before statutory plans became necessary. Moving on, relevant to capital investment and delivery, the board discussed the scale and pace of capital investment. Some members questioned whether the council should pursue additional investment beyond the thirty million government allocation, citing the potential for long term savings through local provision. Officers were able to confirm that the seven million deficit, sorry, seven million identified in the report are related to match funding for their proposed social, emotional and mental health, SEMH, free school already within the capital programme. Furthermore, following a quest for clarity, officers confirmed that the Grantham scheme was progressing through design and expected to complete in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven. The executive member for Children's Services, councillor Natalia Oliver, reaffirmed the commitment to accelerate delivery and continue lobbying government on funding pressures. The board discussed elements pertinent to identification and inclusion in SEND hubs. We raised concerns about delays in identifying placing children appropriately, which were acknowledged by officers. They went on to explain that the strategy aimed to embed early identification and inclusive practice across all schools. The hub model will enable earlier intervention to reduce the need for EHCPs, ensuring specialist places remained available for those most complex cases. Officers further clarified that the hub selection was guided by locality need rather than a first come, first served basis. Around sixty schools had engaged initially with twenty-four expressing interest in hosting hubs. Implementation timescales varied from six to twelve months depending on school type and necessary adaptions. We welcomed confirmation that academies and maintained schools will be treated equitably and location decisions were shaped by demand and travel considerations. We also encouraged exploration of the post sixteen college based provision to extend capacity and facilitate transitions. Officers confirmed such discussions were underway with local providers. The debate then turned to matters relevant to workforce development, underlined that the success of the strategy depended on staff capacity and training and noting that national shortages of SEND qualified teachers. Officers confirmed that ninety-four percent of Lincolnshire schools had engaged in the countrywide training programme with over sixteen thousand models completed. Work continued with the teaching school hub to expand SEND co qualifications and embed SEND leadership across schools. We welcomed the commitment to whole school training and early intervention, recognising the social and financial value of equipping mainstream settings to meet need locally. Finally, the debate moved to consider exclusions, alternative provision and engagement. We endorsed the focus on reducing exclusions through improved behaviour support and creation of calming and regulation spaces in schools. Officers outlined to the board that these measures will be complemented by wider training and therapeutic input. Lastly, members emphasised the importance of clear communication with schools and families regarding the available support and ongoing developments. Officers provided assurances that regular briefings, sector engagement and parent career dialogue would underpin delivery and review of the strategy. In conclusion, the board fully supports the strategy and its recommendations to the executive. Members agree that the Better Belonging Lincolnshire approach offers a credible, evidence based framework to deliver sustainable, inclusive and locally responsive SEND and alternative provision across the country. The board strongly encourages continued emphasis on robust forecasting and data driven planning, early intervention and workforce capacity, timely capital delivery and transparent engagement with schools and families. This concludes my update from last week's board meeting. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts and please can you pass on my thanks to the members of the overview and scrutiny membership board and management board. I had the pleasure of sitting on that and it struck me that everybody in the chamber on the day were very, very committed to doing the very best for this cohort of children. I now open it up to any questions from the executive. Councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important to say that we are all very aware of the national picture in terms of SEND and the increasing pressures that this is putting on all of us as local authorities across the nation and therefore I just wanted to point out just how imperative and forward thinking this strategy is. I commend my officers, they have delivered an amazing strategy which ensures that at local level, we are doing everything that we possibly can to deliver the support that our children and our families need across the county of Lincolnshire whilst the current Labour Government kick this into the long grass in terms of the white paper and make it increasingly difficult for councils to deliver. During OSMB, which I also attended alongside councillor Matthews, there was a focus on the Grantham project, so I just wanted to just add some clarification on that, just to rule out any sort of grey areas that some councillors thought there may well be. So as part of the wider SEND and AP hub strategy, three and a half million has been released from the twenty-four, twenty-five high needs capital programme allocation and brought forward to support delivery in twenty-five, twenty-six. This agreed capital funding has enabled progress on the Grantham project, specifically the planned expansion of Newton Bridge Academy, which was formerly Grantham Additional Needs Federation. The scheme will deliver ninety-six much needed special school places, directly supporting Lincolnshire's sufficiency needs and continues to be actively supported. Since the funding was approved, the project has been in its design and scoping phase. As such, no costs have yet been charged against the high needs capital allocation. This does not reflect any delay or lack of progress, rather it is a necessary part of ensuring that the scheme is fully developed before moving into delivery. The project is progressing at the expected pace and is being delivered in line with all relevant legal and statutory requirements to ensure full compliance and transparency. Once the design stage is complete and proposed full costs are confirmed, the scheme will be presented through all appropriate scrutiny and approval forums for final endorsement of the full costs against the agreed capital spend and for approval for the bill to be progressed. This is expected to be in January, twenty-twenty-six. The council remains fully committed to ensuring that this project is delivered as quickly and as effectively as possible. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Oliver and thank you for the clarification. Also, thank you for the work that you've put into this. I know you've done a sterling job there as well as your officers. Are there any more questions? In that case, I invite the executive to vote on the recommendations set out on page one hundred and sixty-five. All those in favour? That is a unanimous vote again. Item eight then on the agenda for today is Rights of Way Improvement Plan twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty-five. Over to Andy Gutherson.
Thank you, chairman. Morning to everyone. As the report sets out, it's a statutory responsibility for the authority to have a row up in place. The report also sets out the process that we've been through to actually bring it forward to this final approval. That follows the guidance that's issued by DEFRA in terms of the process that we need to follow, which involves a high level of engagement with interested parties and within that process you sort of go through an iterative process to actually sort of address the concerns that have been raised. I'll now let Chris give a bit more detail to that and Andrew's also here to answer any detailed technical questions that may come up about your favourite public footpaths.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, chairman. Good morning councillors. So as Andy explained, this is a statutory document concerning the management of public rights of way in the county, inclusive of the maintenance, the promotion and the mapping of those rights with regards to the definitive map and statement, which is the legal record on which routes in the county should be recorded. The plan has been developed following periods of engagement and consultation with relevant stakeholders and the public as required in the statutory guidance. The plan is specifically developed to be aspirational and should reflect the findings of both the assessment of the needs of the public and the opportunities for improvement as well as for improved accessibility for those with mobility problems, the blind and partially sighted. In forming the plan, it has been considered that four main themes become prevalent following assessment and consultation. Firstly, the need to maintain and the focus on existing network and keeping paths easy to use and well maintained. Secondly, the need to develop the network through removal of unnecessary barriers and improved accessibility and engaging in the planning process to ensure future growth, integration of access to the countryside, recognising the benefits that this brings in both terms of physical and mental health wellbeing and equally recognising the importance that high quality routes to the surrounding countryside can have on the desirability of new developments. And just by way of example, the Kennel Club will tell you that in this country, houses have about twenty-five percent occupancy rates with a dog, so you build a development of two hundred houses, that's fifty dogs, that's a hundred dog walks a day potentially and where do we want to walk them? So we'd like to try and connect people with nature and into the countryside from those new developments. That leads into the theme of connecting, so that's trying to link rights of way with schools and amenities and other places of interest, making sure they're in the best condition so that people can use those as a means of access and to integrate rights of way with other strategies for non-motorised transport such as the local cycling, walking infrastructure plans. And finally, the fourth theme on engaging and promoting, that's looking to be better engaged with residents and visitors as well as parish councils and promoting the network both in terms of the value to health and wellbeing but also to the visitor economy, focusing on circular recreational walk routes, the King Charles III England Coast Path and the Viking Way, which turns fifty years old in twenty-twenty-six. The delivery will be aligned not just to these themes but of the twenty-seven overarching objectives within the plan's statements of action that you'll find towards the end of the plan in the report. With regards to the resources required, the plan is delivered within the service's usual budget envelope but gives us an opportunity to seek further grants, contributions and network enhancement, especially within the planning sector. It also guides our various policies within the service such as the prioritisation of definitive map modification applications and applications to amend the network through diversions, our inspection and maintenance regimes and our enforcement policies. Thank you, Chair. That's the report.
Thank you for that and thank you for the report through you. I now invite councillor Bailey Robinson, vice chairman of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee, who is in attendance today for comments from that committee.
Thank you, leader. Good morning, members. At our meeting held on the twentieth of October, the committee considered the report on the rights of way improvement plan and unanimously agreed to support the recommendations before you. We commended officers for their comprehensive and detailed work undertaken to review the network and set out a clear direction for improvement. I will try to briefly summarise the key points raised during the committee's debate. During our discussion, we focused particularly on accessibility and connectivity. We highlighted that many residents still face barriers to using public rights of way due to missing drop curbs and limited safe access routes. We asked that accessibility be given greater prominence within the plan and that mechanisms be strengthened to identify and address local gaps, especially where residents with mobility challenges or those living in deprived areas were affected. Officers agreed that accessibility and connectivity were central to the plan and confirmed that work was already ongoing between the rights of way and highway of way and highways teams to address such issues. Furthermore, we welcome the confirmation that the council follows the gap gate style hierarchy and that styles are being progressively replaced with more inclusive alternatives. We encourage officers to maintain momentum in this area. We also stressed the importance of forward planning. We felt that accessibility considerations must be embedded early in new developments, not added as an afterthought once planning applications are submitted. While officers explained that the council could not compel developers to include improvements, they assured us that early engagement and clear communication with planning authorities would continue and that updates could be included in annual progress reports. Concerns were again raised about safe cycling routes in Lincoln, where confusing signage remains an issue. Officers confirmed that cycle ways sit outside the R O W I P and fall under the active travel team who are already reviewing the matter. We discussed rural connectivity and how the local cycling and walking infrastructure plans might better include larger villages. We noted that many communities rely on shared local services and would benefit from stronger links. Officers recognised these challenges and confirmed that opportunities for rural improvements would continue to be pursued through highways or housing developments. We also raised the backlog of definitive map modification orders, which continue to take considerable time to process. Officers advised that the backlog was being addressed through a revised prioritisation framework, focusing on cases with the greatest community need. A report on this would need, would return to the committee in due course. Finally, we discussed parking near popular walking routes. We recognised that limited parking could create safety issues and impact visitor experience. Officers confirmed that parking pressures are being carefully managed with local engagement and practical solutions, such as negotiated use of nearby private car parks. In conclusion, the committee fully supports the rights of way improvement plan and its recommendations. We feel confident that the plan provides a sound framework for improving accessibility, safety and enjoyment of Lincolnshire's extensive rights of way network, and we encourage officers to continue prioritising inclusive access and stronger coordination across teams to deliver these improvements effectively. This includes, concludes my update to you. I am over to any relevant questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. And please pass on my kind regards and thanks to the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee for the work that they've done on this and are doing. To the officers, just a personal preference, I quite like kissing gates as an option to get through fences. I don't know why. I now open it up to the executive for any questions or comments. Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report. My question is quite specific. In terms of how the policy supports the right to apply procedure? So currently, national governments have closed that service. I myself have a resident in Hemmingby, which is in my division, who has a footpath very inconveniently going down the side of his house and has an alternative which is far superior to the actual existing footpath and would make everybody's life increasingly better, both his and those people using the footpath. But unfortunately, his right to apply is not available because the government have decided to close that down. So in terms of how this supports that and what we are doing as a local authority to either lobby against the government to get that sorted, or what we can do at a local level in order to make those improvements, because it just seems crazy to me. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oliver, for that question. Yeah, it is, it is a little bit in depth. There has never actually been a right to apply. It was something that the government were bringing in as part of the Deregulation Act in 2016 regarding the closure of applications to the definitive map of historic routes that aren't already recorded. The principle was at the moment, for a public path order to divert a public right of way, there is no right to apply. It's only a power of the authority to process those rather than a duty. And as such, we have to cut our cloth to the resources available to us. So unfortunately, there are instances where we have to say to people, unfortunately, we are unable to progress your possibly very good alternative route in, instead of the, the legally defined public right of way as it, as it is. It does just come down to what we can fit into the, into the working day as much as anything. With the right to apply, we won't be able to have that discretion. We'll have to at least assess somebody's diversion proposal and provide them with an explanation as to why it might not stack up with legislation or whatever. Until that, we are still left with trying to provide this balance of resources against demand. The rights of way improvement plan helps us in those kind of decisions, if you like, in terms of which ones can we prioritise in amongst all the ones that we get across the county. It's 4,000 kilometres of rights of way, many of them affecting private households. So you can imagine the numbers of questions we get about them. And, and we, we do use the rights of way improvement plan in the previous iterations of it to focus how we explain what we can and what we can't do and where the benefits might lie. So if someone comes to us with a really, really good one that, you know, avoids an unsafe stretch of road, for example, that would help us prioritise. So for your resident, it's, it's worth the conversation with us to see how that would sit with the new rights of way improvement plan, maybe something we can do into this new one. But again, it just comes back to resources, unfortunately.
Thank you. I'll have that separate conversation. Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Councillor Chain?
Thank you. I'd, I'd just like to thank my officers for, for the substantial body of work that they've put themselves through to deliver this plan. Thank you very much.
Yes, I pass on my thanks as well. And it's always good to hear about walking dogs twice a day. That's never happened in my household. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. I now invite the executive, executive to vote on the recommendations set out in page 211 of the agenda pack. All those in favour? Again, that's unanimous. Well, thank you, everybody. That's been a very good meeting. A bit longer than I'd thought it would be, but there you go. There was quite a lot in it today. So thanks, everybody. Have a nice lunch.